Good evening, everybody. I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you so much for coming. This is the Yancey County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting for May the 5th, 2025. We'd like to call this meeting to order. As we say in our invocation, I'll ask Commissioner Green, if you will, to lead us in our pledge, and then we'll look over the agenda. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity and privilege that you've given us to have this meeting here tonight. We ask you, pray God for wisdom, understanding, guidance, direction. We thank you for the responsibility that we have here and help us to take it lightly, but to understand exactly what we need to do going forward. Bless this meeting tonight. Bless every heart and every life that's here, and help us to do your will in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's all stand, please. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen. We are missing one commissioner tonight, so we have what we do have a four. So any questions about the agenda? Anything going over? Any discussion? If not, entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve. Go ahead or second. All in favor, say aye. Here an opposed motion, aye. Our consent agenda is very short this month, as a matter of fact. Been doing this for 13 years, shortest consent agenda I've ever seen. Three items on the consent agenda. We have approval of April 14th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. We have the approval of the April 14th, 2025, closed session minutes. And then the approval of the tax release adjustments for 2025. Any discussion or items on there that needs to be... Litigate on?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Go ahead or second. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Next, we have our department updates. We have two this month. We have our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Lauren Deaton. So I saw him standing back there. Lauren, you're up. And Morgan, a bit on deck.
Updates on Parks and Rec. Kidd Mountain, almost done with that. May 19th be the grand opening for that. Burnsville Pool, I think we're going to be Memorial Day weekend. We just got the lift installed. Finish up a few details for the handicap lift on that. Ray Court Park, that project's taking a little longer than we thought. We've run into some issues, but talked to the contractor today. We're looking to hopefully finish September and have that one done. Campground, Cane River Park, we're not... We're all waiting on answers for that still. Right now, we're, uh, our youth sports, a little full tilt with baseball, softball, and T-ball. Had more kids than we've ever had, which is great. But it's hard to find places to form play, so, but it's good. It's been good so far. Any questions?
And the campground and the, for clarity on the date, the campground and Cane River Park, I mean, that's definitely not gonna happen this year because we still have other events to say that this isn't all that. But I do, I do appreciate everything that you've done with what you've had to work with this year. You've done a tremendous job, so thank you. And I know the kids, it's kind of surprising that the most that we've ever had on the head.
Surprised me too.
Anyway, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a little update, and I've been working with Lauren on there, is we have went out for RFQs, request for qualifications for engineering services on the campground, as well as Cane River Park. And we have those engineers fixing to be on contract. We've got to do our first meeting. But CTO has the campground, and Withersden Ravines has the park. So we're fixing to get a scope of work, and then that'll work through the FEMA process, and FEMA inspector will come out and get with the engineer and work through that scope, because nothing's there really, and they don't know what to go off of until our engineer...
No, it's a start from scratch. I mean, it's definitely...
It takes some time, definitely. But we appreciate what Lauren probably does. He's been out trying to get fields ready and, and working odd hours, just trying to get the teams going, and Saturdays and everything else. So we appreciate that, and also trying to do that in time with getting engineers on staff and getting them out to the sites. And, and some of the sites aren't easy to get to, you know? The campground, there's a bridge that don't get there from here. So anyway, it's just been a work in progress, and I appreciate Lauren and his guys really stepping up and getting things going, no matter what the situation is.
And we appreciate it. Thank you. But we all need to understand that the wheels of bureaucracy turn slow a lot of times, especially when you're dealing with two or three different agencies. And campground and our park, there's still some uncertainties there. But we're definitely working on it, and we're kind of at the mercy of a couple of other agencies with the state and the fed. So just bear with us and have patience on that. We're working on it. Next, Department of Social Services Director is Sonya Morgan. I didn't see you up there. I didn't know where you were. Good to have you, Sonya. Thank you.
Thank you. So just, um, the first thing I want to say is, like most of the community, we've been very blessed. A lot of people have reached out to the agency. They know that we work with a vulnerable population of adults and children. So we've had a lot of people offer clothing, supplies, monetary donations, gift cards. And so we've been very, very fortunate. One of the other things that we've been blessed with this year is we received some unprecedented allocations from the state for disaster funding. So we've received some adult services allocations and some child welfare allocations that we can use for essential services. And those are things like physical and mental health services that aren't typically covered by Medicaid or insurance, food, hygiene supplies, clothing, furniture, rental and mortgage assistance, housing repairs, just anything, any need really to help support these families. And these are families that we may be their guardian, they may be in foster care, there may be an open CPS case on. So that's money that we don't typically have, which is awesome. And sometimes that's a deterrent for some of these families to try to reunify, or just our older adult population sometimes just struggles. So it's been a wonderful asset for us. We also received a rental allocation of forty, almost $42,000. So the fair market value for Yancey County is $856. We've been able to help individuals who come in and apply or eligible, two months of rent. And so that's been a great help to our community as well. One of the most exciting allocations we received this year is we typically, every year, get heating and process assistance. This year, we received $333,000 in additional disaster funding. And so typically, energy assistance is used for fuel, your firewood, your electricity, if you use electricity, you know, whatever your fuel source is, or whatever your heating source is. But this year, with this allocation, we can do some things like replace a fuel tank if somebody lost a fuel tank in a flood. If their furnace was damaged, we can have it repaired. If they need it replaced, we can replace a furnace. We can help get the utility reconnected to the house, so you know your heat works. And also insulation, anything that's related to heating assistance. So that's been a huge help to our community. We do still have over $90,000 left in the disaster energy, so please help us get the word out. We've published on social media, in the media. We try to outreach to our clients, so if you can help us, just send people our way if you think they might be eligible. Some extracurricular activities, we roll on pretty much business as usual at DSS, but some of the extracurricular activities, most people don't know that we operate Little Hans learning center, which is our DSS county-run daycare. And our daycare staff participated in Child Fest at Mitchell Hop School this year, and they had an amazing time and really well represented the county. And they're also participating in the Sizzlin Summer Series event on the Town Square, June 15th, or June 14th, excuse me. It's a Saturday. So they've been out and about in the community, advertising early childhood and some of the things they do at the daycare. And one of the most exciting events, and one that we need everybody to help us get the word out about, is on June the 5th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., at the Burnsville Town Center, we're having our second annual Senior Resource Fair. And last year, we had a lot of the county agencies, we had community partners, our vendors, a lot of different people came and set up in the town center, and they had information about healthcare services. We did some health screening, veteran services, scam and identity theft prevention. We had staff from the agency there helping with food and nutrition services and Medicaid applications. So a lot of different services. They brought tons of goodies, and the people that came through were really excited about all the little things that they got to take home with them, and a lot of door prizes. So help us get the word out. If you've got friends or family or neighbors who might benefit from coming out to the event, please do so. We were able to connect some of our seniors in the community with providers at the Health Department who didn't have a provider. So that was pretty exciting to be able to introduce them to those services. So we do have some flyers out on the table, so when you leave, if you want to take them with you and just share them out in the community, that would be awesome. And then finally, one of the other events that we have upcoming, we do a celebration with our adoptive families and our foster parents in the fall. Last year, we had some staff turnover and then the hurricane, but this year, we're looking to do that event in September. And we receive a little bit of adoption promotion money every year for adoptions that we complete in the agency. And we are able to take those funds and celebrate our families with an event, and we do some special things, like do some family portraits and give them gift baskets. And they're our biggest proponents of foster parent adoption. So we really want to celebrate them and let them know how much we appreciate what they do for us and the community. So we thank you guys for your support of our agency.
Oh, thank you. We appreciate all that you do, Sonya.
Do you have any questions?
A big job. Any questions for Sonya?
Thank you.
Her team really helped us out during this storm.
Yes.
County family came together great. Lauren and his group helped with the distribution sides. So we appreciate you, Sonya, and everything you did and stepped up during the, during the big event, Sonya.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Jennifer Barnhart,干事 with U.S. Forest Service. Thank you for coming, ma'am.
Thank you for having me. Okay. All right. Well, good evening. Yeah, thank you so much for having me on the agenda. I'm Jen Barnhart. I'm the District Ranger on the Appalachian Ranger District of the Pisgah National Forest, which spans part of Yancey County. Fortunately, I was supposed to be here, like, in October, and then Helene hit, obviously, before that to come and give you an update. So I'm sad that I have to come and give an update about all the impacts to the forest. Obviously, my heart's go out to y'all continually in Yancey County and your continual recovery. And we just want to be able to share where, where we are with the National Forest in Yancey County. And I know that's a real local asset to so many, so folks are probably wondering, what progress have we made and what's the future lie, especially in the South Toe area? So that's a lot of what my presentation will be on, as well as just hitting on some of our public safety items that we're trying to, to really work out before we can figure out how we can have a path forward to open more parts of the forest. So I'll move on into just showing a quick summary that'll... Okay. Either way. You want me to try it again? Okay. Yeah, sounds good. So basically, the impacts, just in general, just so folks, for us, Pisgah National Forest does span three districts. So that's the Appalachian, the Grandfather Ranger District, and then the Pisgah National Forest. So to give you a rundown for us, we had nearly 190,000 acres impacted, so 20% of the forest areas. So we had 117,000 acres of vegetation loss, nearly 900 miles of forest service road damage, and 822 miles of trails damaged. Not to give you an eyeshot, a lot of y'all have seen some of this, obviously, right around where you live privately, so that's nothing new. But it's widespread for us throughout the forested areas and our watersheds. And then specifically, in your neck of the woods for the Appalachian Ranger District, I know that's really small print, so I'm just going to give you highlights. For the Appalachian, we run six counties. So we have Haywood County, land in Madison, and Yancey County, and Buncombe County, Mitchell and Avery. So we span and have to, we manage the, your public lands throughout those six counties. And so our progress up to date, we had 227 miles of trails have been cleared. So that's 70% of our trails have been cleared of all trees. Doesn't mean it's been cleared of hazards and landslides, but literally sawyers out there, wall-to-wall tree cutting throughout the trails, including the Appalachian Trail. 240 miles of the roads were cleared, and we have salvage sales currently in progress right now. So now a lot of folks in Yancey County, I know, have got questions around debris and fuel loading. What are you going to do about any of that that's happening on the forest? So where we are able to have, get access in for a contractor to be, for it to be viable for them to get in there and get some of that downwood down, they are. So for instance, Spidey Gap has been awarded and sold as a salvage sale. So that would be an example in Yancey County in that area. And one of our quicker things that we did in the, after Helene, was just removal of our debris. So over at Black Mountain Campground, you'll see it, well, a picture of it a little bit, of the amount of debris that was on top of that bridge, and that was removed. Obviously, we're concerned and thinking of the landowners down river. So those are the types of things that we're focused on. So it's watershed trails, all our roads, infrastructure, fuel loading, just a full gamut of different areas that we're focused on. And so some of the other parts, right, local economy, community support. We know that Burnsville, as well as Yancey County in general, relies on coming out to the National Forest and recreating. So we do have Carolina Hemlock Campground. That is reopened. That's been a lot of work in-house by our staff to help do that. So if you hadn't caught that yet, but find outdoors, they have that open and they're operating the concessionaire. And we did have a room cutting a couple of weeks back. And we've also been continually trying to work on reestablishing adequate emergency access. We're very thankful for the volunteer fire departments, the fire departments in the county, in terms of helping with emergency access when folks get injured and if they're out on the National Forest. So that's a big piece for us that we have to work through before you can just open stuff to where a hurricane came through. And I'll highlight that a little bit further in the presentation. All right. This has been a question, I think some confusion about what is closed and why? And so I'll go over that. And what, what do you have to do to get this stuff back open again? So this, this presentation or this slide provides you a little bit more on that. I already mentioned Carolina Hemlocks is reopened. The Appalachian Trail's been open for quite a bit of time, and that's a huge thanks to volunteers for the Appalachian Trail. That portion was done by volunteers, safety record, the most amazing second safety record, but imagine like 400 downed trees and like a mile swath, and that many people going through with a chainsaw to cut it. That's just one little sliver, and that would have been in Yancey County. But all the whole trail would have done that. But that's Carolina Mount Club, Tennessee Eastman, and High Peak and Canoeing Club, as well as North Carolina High Peaks Trail Association. So super shout out to those folks, including the Big Butt Trail, which started with in Yancey County. That was massively impacted, and that was just amazing work by the volunteers that we're so thankful for on that. And then we did get Roaring Fork Falls Trail just opened, and a lot of folks have still been going in there, even though it was closed by our fire staff. We had some fire resources in with heavy equipment. We did clear up the portion of the road that had issues. So we're good to go on there, and that's awesome, because I know a lot of folks look forward to going to that, to that waterfall. And then what is still temporary closed? There is a large swath, and I'll show you the map on the next slide, but just we'll continue going through this list. Black Mountain Campground and Briar Bottom, yeah, still closed. That's because that South Toe Road had massive impacts from the river. And if you go up past the campground, that entire road, the upper South Toe, catastrophic impacts. Niels Creek, folks ask about that, and it's like, well, that doesn't seem too bad, but we've had engineers do assessments. That's been a lot of what we've done in the first month or two, is assessments. That bridge is impacted. We can't have even heavy equipment go over that, that bridge. So we're going to have to address the bridge before we can open that up. And obviously, y'all should be familiar with the Blue Ridge Park by having catastrophic impacts with slides. And that's another, I know that's another huge asset, though, with hunters and others that use that whole area for recreational purposes. So we're all trying to communicate and work through those. But that part's closed. There's trails behind the gate that we have closed, still remain closed. And then Lost Cove and Devil's Creek Trails are closed. And then Bolins Creek Road is your only road, and we have a few within that South Toe area that are closed. But that watershed road, just to give you an update on that, that's, there's landowner impacts of access, but we have a contract awarded, and they'll be working on that road. And there's slides as well on the side of that as you go into the road. But I know the town or the county, I thought, has interest, right, with the water system? So we're aware of that, and we'll be keep tracking that. So y'all just need to reach out to us on, on that portion, but we will be having that contractor going in there to start doing that work for that area that's been impacted highly. But what do you got to do to get this stuff open? So right, we got, we got the trees cleared on these trails, but again, that doesn't mean the hazards are completely gone. We just have, we have resources come in for four weeks. It probably is 8,000-plus hours of sawing, not just the South Toe area, but the Big Ivy area, and also to clean up some more stuff on the AT. And so now we're going to have to move on into assessments, so we can understand what safety hazards are out there, and then trying to look at, again, restoring that adequate emergency and public access. So when folks go in there and we open an area, we also have to coordinate with search and rescue and take them into consideration, right? Because they're the ones that are responding, and we got to make sure they're feeling confident that they can get in there too, to get folks that might get injured. The campgrounds, yeah, with those things will all be contracted out for repairs to address safety hazards, emergency access, and just functional standards to be operational, especially Black Mountain and Briar Bottom. And I'll get into more details in the next couple of slides, but those are the whys. It's really down to public safety and emergency access, but ultimately, I'm the decision-maker and the forest supervisor of what remains closed, just to make that clear. I just seek input from our cooperators and then take that information to help make a decision if we'd be able to reopen it based on the emergency access part. So that's with the fire departments in the county. We make sure we meet with them consistently. And the next slide's just some maps. It's hard to see those, but the left-hand side of the each map, that's the South Toe area, that's in our closure area, the right, or, yeah, the right-hand side is the South Toe area, and the left-hand side is Big Ivy. So the first map is just showing you those roads that are closed in there. And again, this is on our website, and I can, if anyone has questions, I can send you the, where you can go find this info. And then the other map is just the trails section. So the first map on the left is your roads, the second map on the right is your trails. So you can see there's a lot within that South Toe area. And again, that's where we continue to address trail assessments and hazards and figure out, how bad are the trails? I know folks think, well, what happened? Well, tons of root balls have everywhere, which creates giant holes everywhere and landslides. So that's, the trail doesn't, is not just back good to go after we cut some, cut some trees. So Big Ivy's got the same thing going on that we're trying to work through, just like South Toe area. All right. Just to give you a general idea, our forest supervisor, which is James Malonis, we have direction all across the National Forest in Arkansas. It doesn't matter if it's just Pisgah. If it's, if they work on the Nantahilla, they work on the Auri, the Croatan, because that's all managed under one forest supervisor. The priority is, the top priority is Helene recovery. Doesn't matter if you worry the Croatan didn't have that damage. We've had such catastrophic damage that all our efforts from all our staff are put into figuring out how to, how to move us forward and be part of the recovery of western North Carolina. So for us, that means focusing on clean water, safety hazard risk reduction, access and infrastructure, community economy, habitat ecosystem health, and recreation and cultural resources. And thankfully, we did get funded through the American Relief Act in December, so we do have federal funding separate from our budget that we typically get each year that's appropriated through Congress and then signed by the president. So we have that ability to actually make things happen. So that's, that's the awesome news. All right. We have a laundry list of items, so what the heck have Forest Service, what have y'all been doing? So specifically in Yancey County, it's actually quite a large list. Yancey and Mitchell and Buncombe are the hardest hit for the Appalachian District. Madison and Haywood have some areas that were impacted, but not quite as much as those counties I just listed, other than the I-40. I-40 is a huge thing over in Haywood County that goes in between the forests that we're part of, helping that recovery. But a lot of our efforts are in Yancey and Mitchell and Buncombe. So for y'all in Yancey County, I already mentioned that debris removal from Black Mountain Campground on the bridge. We cleared access to the utility line that powered Mount Mitchell Community Council above Black Mountain Campground. That was before the holidays back in December, to make sure that we wouldn't lose that ability, because it was running on a generator. We're accessing access up South Toe Road, including the upper part. We had our staff, the ability that have equipment operators, and they are Yancey County residents themselves, that were up there helping do that work. And that is where we have done a daylight tour with the South Toe Volunteer Fire Department, so they can understand what access is there. Again, it's not like for trucks. This is like UTVs if you're lucky to get up there, but they all know what it looks like in the daylight if they have to go in there, someone doesn't choose to accept that the area's closed and get injured. So we're working closely with those folks. Again, we already talked about Carolina Hemlocks repairs. Talked about the South Toe area is cleared, probably 2,000-plus hours in that area alone. So, and we've been starting to work on planning for the trail assessments and getting outside resources to come help us with that. And we've looked on assessing changes in fuels and fuel break planning, so looking to see, right, we have lots of downed vegetation. That's impossible for us to get that off the ground. So we have to start looking at our plans for fuel breaks and what can we address with salvage, or is it mechanical treatments beyond the salvage sales that we do? Planning and contracting the debris removal for forest service roads and existing fire control lines, anywhere where we have burns planned in the past. Not saying we're going to burn, but we're trying to get those control lines cleaned up, but particularly around all the forest service roads. I know a lot of private landowners are wondering when we're going to do something about debris along roads, but that's on the docket. Roaring Fork Falls open. Again, Bolins Creek Road, contract awarded. I already talked about Spidey Gap salvage sales. Didn't start up yet. They have a year to it. So we're going to get that out there when the contractor's ready. South Toe Watershed assessment has been completed by outside, outside resources that came in. And then we have a roof maintenance contract for all the forest service roads for all our counties. And so I can't tell you when we'll be hitting Yancey County, but they'll be going in doing graveling, all that kind of stuff. If it's some major thing, that's a different Bailey Wick will have a contractor specifically come in to do anything that's massively damaged. So for instance, we have the upper South Toe is going into a contract to address that road to get better established emergency access beyond what we've been able to do within our, our capabilities and health. And then we were at that Yancey and Mitchell County Forestry Event in Burnsville that was here a couple of weeks ago for ecoforesters. This next slide is just some real good shots. You can see some befores and afters. So you can see where that big debris pile is on the bridge. That's the aerial view of Black Mountain Campground. Next to it, you can see that's been all removed. You can get an idea of what folks are cutting on the trails. So those logs, that's what trees are stacked up, and that's what you're trying to cut through. Down on the bottom left, that's again, equipment in there trying to get through to establish some emergency access. And then the bottom two are showing you Carolina Hemlock, and then the befores and afters to get that up and operational for the, for the community. All right. Future plans. Again, small, small type there, but short-term, again, I've gone over a lot of those types of things. I'm not going to hit over those again, but I think the midterms are the big ones that y'all be interested in. So planning for repairs to Black Mountain, Briar, Briar Bottom Campground, to potentially open a portion of that in 2026. We can't promise that, but if we can open a portion of it, that's our goal in 2026, is to have a portion of that open. Reconstruction, already mentioned, that South Toe Road, Neal Creek Road, replacing that bridge. And then starting to focus on the long term, is that sustainable design for the, the Black Mountain and the Briar Bottom Campground? So we're looking to like redo that entire campground, not just go in there and fix and plug in a couple of things. So that's, that's amazing. So if we can get that, because that is aged infrastructure to begin with, that campground's been there a very long time. So that's, that's a pro that we have funding for. And then starting to work on trail reconstruction after we do those assessments and getting contracts out for that work. And then last, I'll leave that here. We will have a community meeting in Burnsville. We've been setting these up around any of our areas that we have a lot of closure areas in. So for instance, y'all are one of the four. So we will be Wednesday, June 4th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Burnsville Town Center. I'll give an update and overview similar to this, but we'll also then have breakout areas where folks can go to staff if they're interested about fire or fuels. They can go... fire or fuels. They can go over there and ask, for instance, one of the residents, David McPhee, our fire management officer, he'll be there, for instance, or one of our other fire staff that's local to answer questions, or if they have water check questions. And it doesn't mean we'll have all the answers for all the questions, but we're trying to give, where you guys can have some interactions with me or staff around variety areas, the recreation, the trails, those types of things. And then one last thing that I didn't get to mention is that we are looking to consider opening a portion of the trails that's before the bridge in the South Toe area. I don't have, I'm not gonna make a decision. It won't be closer till I can get some more ducks in the road, but Colbert Ridge, Woody Ridge, and the Black Crest Trail, that's outside the gate where we have it closed, where the majority of the damages, but we have to get those trails assessed. I have to coordinate with the, obviously Volunteer Fire Department, their search and rescue, and we've been working with Mount Mitchell State Park, because you know when one area is connected, people don't listen and they try to wander over in an area that's closed, which Mount Mitchell is closed. And we're also getting a test run to see if the Blue Ridge Parkway is, potentially may allow for just emergency access up in that area, which would help us greatly if someone would get injured. So once I can get those all aligned again, I'm trying to meet next week with those folks and see if that's a possibility for. I can see if I can open some more trails, maybe the end of the month or early June. So stay tuned. It's not definitive, but we're, we're thinking and pondering on it. And then the last slide is just putting it out there. I know if there's any other events or anything that y'all have, and just please make sure you think of us. We're definitely part of your community and would love to be at the table to help in any way. I know we've been trying to get to the long-term recovery group meetings y'all have once a week. A lot of our fire staff and myself have not been able to pop in. My plans to come to one of those next week, next Tuesday and pop into that group. And like I said, we just wanna be, if y'all has got something or questions, we're just here to be with y'all and, and help with the recovery in Yancey County. So yeah, don't hesitate to reach out. Morgan's got my information. I think Lauren does too, but yeah, I can leave my card and y'all can reach out if you got any information or come see us once you report at 6:00 PM.
Any questions for Jim? Well, thank you very much. You guys have done a tremendous job. Would have not ever believed that you would have gotten the Auri oil right now, just like the rest of the county, but thank you.
Yeah, you guys are all superstars. So yes, super shout out to Yancey County. You guys are top-notch. Everyone that you guys have that's helped and support and everyone in the community that's been coming together to help out each other. Heard just amazing stories from everything that's occurred from y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Danny Magintosh, our tax administrator. He's gonna be telling us about some refund releases and late applications. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. It's hard to follow that. After the very valuable update with summer time on the way. There's a lot of that information. I included the releases in your packet. We have lots of the refunds. Hope that's helpful and helpful to those. I'm just here to answer questions about specific ones that those even had.
Any questions for Danny about what we have in our packet on the tax releases? If not, we need a motion to approve these. Yep, we have a motion right here, second. All those in favor say aye. Do you have a motion, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it. Next two items are board appointments. Our first board appointment is something that we tackled from last month. The Yancey County Department of Social Services, I believe there was a vacancy, opened up early and we need to reinstate that appointment. So do I hear any nominations? Gretchen Banks. Now, this is Realtor Gretchen Banks, not Doctor Gretchen Banks, for clarity. Any other nominations? Clearing now. Do I hear a second? Always in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries. Next board appointment is the High Country Council of Government or Workforce Development Board. Mr. John Anglin sits on that board and is seeking a reappointment. And I have no problems with that whatsoever. Is there any discussion or any other nominations for this position? He represents us very well and very, very, very engaged, proactive. Any other nominations? Do I hear none? Do I hear a second? We got two seconds. You can take your pick. All those in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries. So both of those are good. Next, we have Speaker of the High Country Council of Government, Michelle Ball. Talk to us about community development block grant program compliance requirements. We talked for the last three months about this. So welcome, Michelle. Thank you for coming.
Which one's first on the agenda? The, okay. I'm here for, I'm on here for a couple of things. Okay, so it's analysis of impediments to fair housing, the procurement policy, and I've got it. Again, there should be three of these. Procurement policy, oh, and a project ordinance.
Yep.
It's simple. Those were three things I did not have last time when I brought all those policies in mainly because I was still working on them and still trying to get some, still trying to get some comments from Commerce before I brought one of them in. But those are three things that need to be adopted as their standard CDBG policies.
So the analysis of the, of the, anybody have any questions or any comments for Ms. Ball? We need a motion. This is the procurement policy and plan for the development block grant program. We have a motion. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries. Next is the analysis impediments of fair housing 2025. We need a motion on that one as well. And that's something we've already discussed. Anybody want to make that motion? Have a motion. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. Standard operating procedure on these block grants.
And the project ordinance.
The project ordinance for the.
It's in the next.
I wasn't sure which one of you guys were going to make the, the address for that and then we'll have a public hearing. So go right ahead, Michelle.
So yeah, the, the project ordinance and it's just the normal project ordinance. And I think you usually do a budget ordinance, don't you? This is a project ordinance for the whole thing. And they will accept either one. It's just easier to do a project ordinance because you don't have to do one every year.
All right. All right, we have a motion right here, second. All those in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries. We need to do a public hearing. The amendment documents approval, do you need to talk about that before we?
Yeah, I've got, I've got, I'm going to say what the amendment's about, or what the, which public hearing's about. Yeah, I can do that first, then you go to the public hearing. Okay, the purpose of the public hearing is to give opportunity for students input concerning a program amendment to the Yancey County CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Project 23C 4018. Back in December, the county was awarded a, a CDBG and R grant, Neighborhood Revitalization Grant from the Department of Commerce. The initial application was $2 million, although the award was for $4 million, which was great. They, they had the extra money to give the county for some hurricane recovery. And because of that now, this amendment is amending that original application. And there's actually three parts of that is to increase the amount from $2 million to $4 million to increase the original, we said we would do assist 10 homeowners. Now we can do 20. And out of those 20, there's seven people that will actually, the program usually, if we're gonna replace homes, is on the same footprint or the same property. There's gonna be about seven homeowners that are having to move because either they're in the floodplain or their home was washed away and the property is just unbuildable, if that's a word. And so they're having to, to obtain other properties that we will then put a replacement house on. And those are called relocations. So we have to create a new line item for those relocations. Let's see. The county solicited more homeowner applications to get those extra, to select the 20 homes. And we have, we have six alternates. So there's, there's actually 26 eligible applicants in there. And I just said of those seven homes will be relocated. The project will require adjustments to the budget to create the new line item. So what we're doing is taking and creating a new line item for relocation of $1,330,000. And then that decreases the rehabilitation line item from $3,600,000 to $2,470,000. Millions. And it also, we had 400, almost $400,000 in the admin line item. We're not gonna use that. We're moving the admin, 200,000 of that admin is being moved up into the relocation line item. So, and that still leaves enough admin for me and enough admin for the town or the county to do whatever. And there's still actually might be some extra left there if, if we have an emergency. And right now, we're working, I'm working on the environmental assessment. It needs to be completed on each home. And I've done one on 20 before. I've done five, but 20's, 20's a big one before the funds could be released. So I'm hoping that that process doesn't take more than about three or four months. And.
Have they already got started? Have they already started that process?
I'm sorry, I've started, I'm doing the environmental review. So I'm, we're, I'm at the beginning stages of that because we just, we just got everybody selected for like two weeks ago. And so we've looked at maybe fall before the funds are released so we can get started. And then there'll also have to be some time to sort this down on the homes before. And then once that happens, we can get going, we can bid it out. And hopefully by that time, we can figure out, you know, have some preliminary stuff done as well so that it gets started quicker, maybe before it is too cold.
Any questions from the board before we open up? Do I hear a motion of going to public hearing concerning the community development block grant program for the housing ordinance? Do I hear a motion? Got a motion? Do I hear a second? All right. This opens the floor to any public comments. Anybody would like to speak about this community development block grant program for the revitalization and relocation of the homes through this program, which is an awesome program. It's gonna be able to help a lot of folks out. We're moving from about five typically up to 10, and now we're gonna be able to do 20 homes. So that's, that's an amazing accomplishment. We appreciate that, Michelle. But any comments or any questions, anything from Michelle, from, from the public?
Just saying a thumbs up.
All right. Going once. Danny?
Chairman, I just want to commend Mr. Morgan and the tax office on the work that they've done.
Yes.
Michelle, of course, I can't brag over her enough because when she comes, she brings money. But it's a tremendous amount of work. You can say, you can say these numbers like 20 applicants or 25 or 30 or whatever, and then you're putting this, but that's a lot of work to determine and get to this. So I think everybody involved is appreciated.
Yeah, we agree.
And that's narrowed down. How many did you end up, how many applications? Almost 80 applications and they narrowed it down. And I, yeah, they narrowed it down. I didn't, I didn't have anything to do with that. I just did the paperwork.
Yeah, and think about the stress that that is, you know.
I used to do all that.
That's tough. That's tough.
I used to do all that now.
That's tough.
So I do know how hard it is.
Well, you guys have been very, very diligent in putting it together and getting the work done so far. Look forward till we have ribbon cuttings on these houses. That's going to be a measure of accomplishment. We appreciate it. All right. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? I have a motion to close public hearing. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. All right. Thanks for your input. So after the public hearing, we need a motion to both of these particular ordinances. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second. And we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries. So thank you, Michelle. We appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda is our county manager's report. Ms. Lynn Austin. She's got a couple of different things to discuss. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. First off, we have the US Tire contract that we tabled, the recycling contract that we tabled last month. Did get some more numbers on that. You know, they're charging us per ton instead of per load. And so it went up about $40,000. Got some more quotes in and those were higher than what we originally had. So that by about $915 higher. So I would ask that you approve the US Tire recycling contract for the recycling centers.
Now, I just had a discussion with our department head on that and he totally agrees, thinks this is the best route for us to go. And he's been working pretty hard on that and I appreciate all the hard work you did.
There's not many folks that doesn't.
Yeah, that's what he was gonna.
That's the problem.
That was updated. As far as I know, there's only two that's even interested. And that makes pickings pretty slimy. All right. Do I hear a motion? We approve this US Tire recycling contract? Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries.
Then I have another little housekeeping thing about, you know, we've done some tentative awards and resolutions for our ARCA projects, the state appropriation money that we're doing with the town to help them on their water and sewer and expansion of press on the west. This is for the Charlie Brown Road. They did bid it out, had to bid it out twice. The award would be for $1,155,000 to TP Howard's Plumbing Company. They're the only ones that bid on it twice, couldn't open it till the second bid. So I would ask that you guys approve that and we're, be able to move forward and meet the deadline on that grant. Hopefully to have everything done by December 2026. So I would ask that you approve that.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. Clearing none opposed, motion carries.
Just want to remind you guys that there is an FFA chapter banquet dinner this Thursday, May the 8th. Cafeteria is providing lunch out there. Cafeteria is 6:00 PM and the auditorium at 7:00. Can go to one or both or whatever you want to do. Also, we're trying to make up a dinner from, for the Pregnancy Center Dinner is May the 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 also. So it's gonna be hard to do both, but that is a rescheduled from October the 3rd, I believe, for the Pregnancy Center. I know we have planned to go then, so I just wanted to remind you that that is coming up. I think it is at the Town Center. I'll double check. I think the location is the same.
Yes.
Town Center. Have a special person here I want to introduce you to. Long awaited. She started May the 1st. Have Ms. Whitney Lear, who is our librarian director of the library. We're glad to have her on staff and she's been working diligently since she got here, bidding for grants and following up with the state and getting in touch with Amber and moving forward on the library so we'll have a smooth transition. So we appreciate her and just want to give an introduction and let her introduce herself to you.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Whitney Lear and I am honored to serve as the new library director for Yancey County. I bring with me a background in education, community engagement, and a deep passion for public service. I am also a patron of the library and have long appreciated its role in my own life. I understand that the idea of a standalone library has sparked a variety of responses within the community. I want to acknowledge those concerns. I see those concerns not as obstacles, but as invitations to listen, learn, and create something that truly serves everyone. Public libraries are more than just buildings with books. They are community centers, technology and knowledge hubs, fun places for kids, and resources for lifelong learning. My goal is to make the library a welcoming place that is active within the Burnsville community. Over the coming months, I will conduct Over the coming months, I will conduct surveys and monitor program attendance, patron usage, and facility needs to ensure that the library moves in a direction that best meets the needs of our community. As the founder of Imagination Library, Dolly Parton once said, "You can never get enough books in enough hands of children." I completely agree, and if I may add, I believe we are all in some way children at heart, searching for a good book and a welcoming place to enjoy it. I hope to make Yancey County Public Library that place. Thank you.
We have some literature and some different things out there.
Yes, and there's also, um, physical copies of the handout that I posted on the Yancey County Local Government Facebook page. Um, I'm working diligently to apply for grants, other things, and I also have physical copies of the survey if you want to add to the survey.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney. Appreciate that. All right. Anything else, Ms. Austin? Got anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Next, county commissioners report. Any commissioners got anything to speak about, add to, comment? Uh, it's not here, so we can probably move on. Uh, county attorney, Mr. John Austin, I think you've got some surplus property to talk to us about?
I do. I think last month or, or either in, uh, March, uh, there were two offers that were offered to you. I addressed those separately. The first one was an offer to purchase 4.28 acres that had declared a surplus property. That is the old Curtis Place, which is up on Bill Allen Ranch.
Yep.
Uh, the offer was Mike Black and his wife, and they offered $8,000 for that tract of land. You all intended to approve that purchase and allow it to go forward. It has been duly advertised in the local newspaper. We waited a 10-day period. There were no upset bids that were prepared. So I have prepared, together with Morgan, a draft resolution that sends forth those facts. You have two choices. You can either choose to reject the offer, or you can elect to expander, accept the offer. I've prepared a tentative deed. If you accept the offer, we'll attach this resolution that you'll be considering tonight to the contract or to the deed. We will reach out to the owners and tell them to tend to us the balance of the deposit at that time and what we're looking for the deed to them. So you've got a proposed resolution. If you would just take action as to whether or not you want to reject that deed or whether you want to accept it.
All right. We had this discussion last month, so what's the place we're going?
Motion to accept.
Got a motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have two seconds. Madam Clerk, take your pick. Uh, all those in favor, of course, is unanimous, say aye.
Aye.
Here is not opposed, motion carries. So we will accept that offer.
At that point, the whole litany of the, uh, of the, uh, process, you've got a second offer to purchase, uh, made in the Jacks Creek Township. You similarly accepted the initial bid from, um, Scott and Christopher Gordon, purchased that tract again. It is being advertised. Uh, 10 days have passed, and there have been no upset bids. So you have two choices regarding that tract of land, either reject or accept.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Here is not opposed, motion carries. I put some both back in on the book. We can get some reading.
Hi, you're welcome.
Good thing. Any more?
Nothing else from me.
All right. That's good. Thank you, sir. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, we have our public comments section. And as we do every single month, uh, there are some ground rules about the public comments section. Each speaker has three minutes. Uh, and again, we would like for folks pleased to be respectful of everybody's time as we move through this, uh, and be respectful of everybody's opinions. Um, we all might not agree, but we appreciate everybody's opinion, and we certainly accept the opportunity for everybody to share those opinions, and we thank you for coming and participating. Uh, with that being said, uh, some things were, were said last month about our engagement and our inner non, our lack of interaction with the public comments. Uh, the way that the public comments section is set up under general statute in North Carolina, uh, it's not a time of dialogue. It's a time where the public gets to have an input, and the commissioners do not engage nor have a conversation about that. So that's just the way the policy's set up. Uh, it's not that we don't want to, it's just that that's the way it's set up. So here's our time to respect what you have to say. So with that being said, we have several speakers here tonight. Uh, first one is Jenny Willett, speaking about federal government funding cuts. So thank you for coming, Ms. Willett.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good day, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Jane Willett, and I've lived here for three years. I've worked with the health department, Yancey County Health Department, Yancey County Schools, Yancey County Middle School Health Centers, the Tulliver Arts Council, and a few other nonprofit schools. My mission, moving here and to enjoy this small town, was to be a helper, to help the children especially. My previous life was a professional clown, Calliope the clown, pink hair and sparkling nose. I used to do oncology wards at the children's hospitals. Anyway, that's my passion. So writing grants for all of those different agencies that I worked for was something that I had to learn, and it was very difficult. So what I'm talking about tonight is the fact that the current administration is pulling so much of the funding from FEMA that won't help Yancey County recover or rebuild it because I did hear tonight some very good, uh, things about new funding that's coming in. That's wonderful. We have an incredible uphill battle to get this place recovered and rebuilt. Further complicating the financial picture for Yancey County is withdrawing of funds, hub start, meals on wheels, housing assistance, EBT, SNAP, Medicaid for the elderly, children, and the disabled, and the disabled. The federal government is pulling, also pulling grants for health departments, farmers, schools, and libraries. When grants are available again, collaboration is viewed as a plus, as I've noticed from writing grants. They want to see collabora, collaboration on buildings, on IT, on finances. Standalone libraries, standalone health departments, standalone anything does not show collaboration with your area agencies. I don't know how you're going to sell these grants to the federal government and to the North Carolina government. Collaboration benefits because you share buildings, you share IT, you share administration, you share finances, so you have more money left to help with the needs of your citizens. And your citizens are going to need a lot of help. My suggestion is that you table some of these projects that you've taken on due to Hurricane Helene, and in two or four years, you come back and you look at it again and see you have the money to invest in these things that you want to do standalone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. And next is Ms. Jackie Ma, uh, from the town.
This is it.
Uh, participatory democracy. Thanks for coming, Jackie.
Thank you. Very easy.
Good evening.
A healthy democracy is a government of process. Citizens vote, but in addition, they attend meetings and town halls, they contact representatives, they serve on boards and committees, they give voice to questions and concerns, and in open dialogue with their elected leaders. In a healthy democracy, citizens are engaged in the process of governance. A faltering democracy is a governance of product. Citizens are shut out of the process other than voting, although lately even this is under attack. Our democracy is supposed to be of the people, by the people, for the people. But here, the people have been assigned to the role of silent witness to the products of governance with no meaningful dialogue, no response to the questions that are submitted, and no authentic opportunity to engage. Sadly, this commission announces the products, the decisions, expenditures, and appointments, but process happens behind the door, highly partisan and out of sight. It seems you are unengaged with the people you have been elected to serve. Recently, you described the people attempting to engage with you as hoopla and a circus. But if there are clowns, other than the one that just announced herself, they are not back here in the peanut gallery. This false version of democracy may stumble along for a while, but eventually, the wheel will turn and citizens will again demand to be included in the process. Your term of service will be remembered as a dark moment in our otherwise imperfect but brilliant experiment with participatory democracy. Your unwillingness to truly engage in intelligent public discussion with each other at the table and with Yancey citizens about the library and all the other critical decisions you face is embarrassing to witness. It is always easier to dictate rather than discuss decisions, but easier does not mean the decision will be the right one for the people of this county. Tearing apart a terrific regional library is only the latest example of your shameful embrace of an anti-democracy style of governance. Scheduling a midday, end-of-month, two-minute meeting with 48-hour notice and no public comment to hold a pro forma vote to withdraw from Amy may have been your fist bump moment. You may think it was cute and clever to push a fiscally irresponsible and hate-fueled agenda despite vigorous public opposition, but there are some other C-words that better describe these actions: cowardly, condescending, conniving, and cruel. You still have time to stop this hoopla and remember, America did not break the shackles of a despotic king 250 years ago to grovel under the thumb of dictators.
Thank you, Jackie. Next is Mr. Ray Allen, speaking on thank you. Thanks for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Got three minutes.
My name is Ray Allen. I live in Green Mountain, up near the top of Ayers Mountain. Uh, I've been here four years. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff here, and I know that the minority is very vocal. The last time I checked, President Trump got 2/3 of the vote in Yancey County, 71% of the vote in Mitchell County, 74% of the vote in Avery County, almost 80% of the vote in General T County. When your last election, the two Democrats got 27.9% of the vote. This is exactly what we want. I've made over 100 friends in those three years minimum. We're all very excited about what you're doing with the library. I can't believe the two issues that brought me here tonight and the state regional meeting is spruce bombing and brought me into this fight was the library being used for political agenda purposes and to give adult material to children. I can't believe as a 65-year-old gay man with my partner 32 years that I have to ask for that to stop. But I'm glad the way everything happened, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Ray. Next is, uh, Matt Willett, speaking about priorities. Thanks for coming, Matt.
Appreciate the opportunity. We've all experienced a devastating event whose effects will be felt for a very long time. This hurricane has set this county on its heels, and it's looking to you to do everything you can for them, everything. Sometimes that means collaborating with or receiving help from elsewhere if you really want to do everything you can. Independence is a fine thing, you can manage it, but it doesn't trump collaborations that multiply effectiveness. I would hope that you can see, especially after this disaster, that sometimes you can't do it alone, and there's no shame in that. Independence, though, requires the resources to be able to stand alone. You've stated that you've seen the benefits of independence, but you've not shared any of that with us. There is a lot of broken, there's a lot broken in our county, couples, homes, businesses, and lives. Now in this time of need, I wonder why so much of your time and energy is being devoted to something that isn't broken and that has actually been a lifeline for many at this time. Taking the library out of the regional system and multiplied its resources and paid for itself is not and should not be a priority in these times. As we navigate this new disaster and try to make the community whole again, I ask that you prioritize just that and return to the library situation beyond this arbitrary deadline, if not rethinking it altogether. We all know the pretext to the decision to take control of the library, and it wasn't Bear in mind that in these times, finding grant money or any kind of financial help will be harder than ever. I am not being disrespectful to say that I am not convinced that the library can be sustained by an independent company without help or collaboration with other sources. Again, I think the priority is to make this county whole again, and the library is not just another feature of Yancey County, but an information hub offering internet availability and instruction, resources for survivors, et cetera. These things should be taken into account when altering and limiting such a valuable resource and asset. When our tri, the county is trying to get on its feet, I hope you prioritize giving all resources available to the community. The library is a real entity that provides information, sanctuary, meeting space, and community, and above all, is available to everybody free of charge to help lift up and form the citizens of our county now and I pray forever.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Next speaker is Guy Bernico, and, uh, speaking about Democratic Foundation. Thanks for coming, Guy.
Thank you for sharing this with all of us.
You're welcome. You've got three minutes.
My name's Guy Bernico. I'm relatively new to the area, although I have lived in Nashville before and I've been around the block. Uh, I have, and many of you will share, a strong conviction that a healthy democracy in any cultural setting is enriched and enlivened by a far-reaching diversity of informed thoughtfulness, whether it's across disciplines, across cultures, across religions, across genders, and otherwise. A good library, and especially a public library, that makes accessible to as many people as need or would be interested in valuable penetrating information to make acute thoughtful decisions and sensible choices, as well as to enrich the conversational setting. And I don't mean the word conversational just as a casual comment. I mean it the way David Abrams and Juanita Brown mention when they speak of the World Cafe as the foundations and the enrichment of human and social culture, as being an ongoing exchange of thoughtfulness, and the enrichment of that thoughtfulness with different achievements that are collected out of a library setting, differing, and yet all of them mutually part of an ecology of mine that enriches not only our human and eco-human lives, but the potentials for a future that can't be simply codified with little maxim tropes rule. tropes rules. I think the attempt to turn a library into a version of catechism is an unfortunate choice. I think, on the other hand, a good library, public college or otherwise, is to embrace and to enrich and to enliven, especially from childhood onwards, the potentials of a community and community individuals to exchange with one another in knowledgeable, authentic, and far-reaching meaningfulness that goes beyond simply dollar-stent evaluations of economic form or political, juridical niceties. I think we need to be able to really share time, life, and meaningfulness with one another, and a library helps us do that knowledgeably. And keep in mind, we're not just talking knowledge in the sense of discourse, science. We're talking fiction, we're talking nonfiction, we're talking different cultures, we're talking different religions, we're talking sensibilities that come ultimately, depending on the cosmologist of your choice, from billions of years of thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Our next speaker is Jana Courier, speaking about the library. Thanks for having me, Jen.
Thanks for having me. Hi, my name is Jana Courier, and I'm absolutely terrified of public speaking, so I might probably be having a root canal than doing this right now, but I have something to say. Although I'm new to beautiful Yancey County, I was born and raised in the state of North Carolina and, of course, taught Jesus's command to love your neighbor and how it truly matters. That means that it truly matters how you treat people. Since we moved here, I have become acquainted with many lovely souls. I believe that most people here would give someone the shirt off their back if needed, and many of my neighbors truly embody that spirit. I even had a sweet man from the Yancey County Transportation track me down when I accidentally left my phone in his vehicle. The way that people have supported each other during and after the storm has been breathtaking. As much as I appreciate the show of community, I'm extremely troubled by the way some members of the community are treated, including the staff of our wonderful library. The Yancey County Public Library has been a part of the Amy's regional system for over 70 years and has been serving in welcoming all members of our community for those decades. It is mint or they either won an award for being the North Carolina Director of the Year. It's appalling that this body has been eager to discard all that this library brings to the community because apparently their reminded person was offended by a pride display, making a mistake. It is a display that could literally save a life. Offering a safe and welcoming place for everyone in the community is one of the many important aspects of a community library. Shockingly, our library staff has endured much abuse, such as being called broomers and pedophiles as a result. That's appalling. Shockingly, this is an extension of the vile maltreatment of members of our queer community by some other members of our local community. This behavior is not kind, it's not neighborly, and it's not treating our fellow human beings with love, as Jesus commanded. These baseless accusations are rooted in lies and ignorance on the part of those pointing fingers and disregarding Jesus's command to love our neighbors. We must do better. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Wosfield, speaking on two questions. Thanks for coming, Kathy.
Just wrote that in case you were going to make people who had the same topic non-hold on.
Ah, yeah.
I surprised myself, and probably you, when I ended last month's three minutes with shame on you. That's not something I think I've ever said to someone before, so I owe you a tiny apology, but it showed my disappointment and frustration. Lynn, you only spoke to what the regional library agreed to leave to the new county to ensure a quality library. There was no mention that the bookmobile was a trade for office rent for only one year. We were also looking for more information about the budget, and I realize that that's an ongoing progress. And, but we're still confused about two whys. Why are you spending taxpayer money for an entity that is already funded and funded at higher levels as part of the regional system? Why are you using taxpayer dollars for something funded when there are so many programs that could use more funding, especially at this time? And importantly, is that you still have not clearly explained why you think this move is in the best interest of the county. Yet those are the words that you keep saying. While your decision began or became public after the complaint about the LGBT Q pride display, you now say that isn't the reason. So what is? The reason we question this is that, Jeff, you have said there will be no books with a political, moral, or any bias. Every book has a bias. In English class, you called it "pride view." So what, no books? You've also publicly disagreed with the legal definition of pornography. Jeff, you said that what may be pornography to you may not be pornography to me, even though there is a legal definition. There are some books that I've read, take Outlander, for example. This made me uncomfortable, but it's not pornography, and I wouldn't deny anybody else the right to read that book. So who will be making decisions about the library and its program and contents? In North Carolina, county libraries are not required to have a board of directors or an advisory board, though most do, and it is recommended. I strongly owe you to show that you do want to serve all the people of Yancey County in their best interest by appointing a board, and a board that includes a cross-section of the county's population and interests, to show that you want public input and accountability. And if you do, I put forward my name. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Stokes, and speaking on control and rationale. Thanks for coming, Jason. Got three minutes.
All right, I talk really fast, so here we go. I'm Jason Stokes. Many people in this community know who I am due to the air or from news broadcasts over the last seven or eight months. More know my family, the raised and their ancestors, who have been proud members of this community for as long as Burnsville has been in existence. We love them, we're proud to know some of the great people that live here with us. I'm here because it is time to. We've all become aware of the dangerous implications when government officials fail to fulfill their duties to their communities. We have seen the disastrous effects of government overreach and partisan power grabs with the intention of nothing more than obtaining more control of those they see as weaker than themselves. This does not include a single group among us, it includes all of us. I am not a member of a single voting party or a single democratic group. I am a citizen of a democracy that represents everyone who holds the law for everyone. We have seen a board that has repeatedly put itself before its community. We could discuss Health Department inadequately supportive, causing real damage to people's lives, the budget unethically improperly managed, or extremely suspicious property tax adjustments, and so forth. We could discuss messaging during the worst attacks created to strike our community and eating of our lifetimes that foster division and chaos despite our community members' efforts to see each other as equals and stand together in our greatest need. But we're discussing the library when we should be discussing community and recovery, tearing down and functioning an essential tool to everyone, everyone in this room, and replacing it with less effective, insulated, more expensive alternatives. We are robbing our citizens of fat. You are robbing our fellow citizens of resources and tools, not only in a library, but taking time and resources away from our community efforts to recover from the storm and prepare for next season, with a alarming lack of transparency, misleading numbers, and a smugness that says we are better than you, we know better than you, and we'll do as we please. Last week at the DC rally against a authoritarian anti-democratic politician, I was recognized by a young filmmaker who saw my interview on this square, where, still in shock, I tried to articulate the needs of our community. She said she was honored to have spent the last month here learning about us and how our recovery is going. That moment taught me to stand up, no matter who you think is listening, to be heard. Speak for me, heart, and speak the truth. This is the truth. Our commissioners have forgotten who they serve and that they are servants to the people, to us, and that this community is powered by the law, by the vote, and by public action to correct them when they fail to fulfill their duties of public service. We are not afraid to do that now, and it is our duty as citizens to continue that every day. A library today is a school tomorrow, a theater, a newspaper, a local business with unpopular politics. Those who seek control will never stop seeking more control and are therefore unfit to leave.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we have Dee Loomis.
Can I just do a follow-up? Oh.
Speaking about the library. Thanks for coming, Ms. Loomis.
Thank you very much, sir.
Brutal.
My name is Dee Loomis. I'm new to the area, and I'm going to apologize upfront because I did not come prepared. I kind of got talked into this, so I have no speech, I have no format, and I'm probably already going to get emotional. I worked 17 years in a library, and I've seen recently where I come from and where I chose to move to, where the powers that be want us to be small. Small libraries, smaller public schools, so that they can take those resources elsewhere. The destruction of knowledge and the destruction of access to knowledge makes us all blessed. I have questions because, like I said, I'm fairly new. I got here just before the storm. How can you possibly think that tearing apart something that was one of the reasons I was happy to move here, because there was a consortium library to make up for the fact that some of the libraries in this area are smaller and do not have everything? How can you possibly, possibly, in a million years, think of tearing apart something that works, that makes life better for people? It's your job. I don't understand. Please, somebody make me understand how freaking something that important is your job?
Next speaker is Charles, is it Clop? Okay. Speaking about digital services of the library. Thanks for coming, Charles.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Got three minutes.
Hi, my name's Charles Clop, a resident of Yancey County for four years and so today. As you can see, I'm a senior citizen, actually in the elderly range. In Yancey County, approximately 33% of the population is 65 years old or older. The 65 or older population varies widely among counties in North Carolina, with Yancey County having one of the higher percentages according to the NC Impact Initiative. Today, I visited the Sprucevine Library to get help from the Digital Skills Access and Resources Person. She's the digital literacy librarian. She helped me find documents that I had saved but couldn't find. I now can do that, and it's an important task to be able to do. I have a new MacBook, and it's been hard for me to find things that I've saved, you know, letting it do its thing, and, you know, then I couldn't find them. This service is especially useful for seniors and actually anyone who won't be available at the Yancey Public Library if you continue on the path to leave Amy, since that position will not transfer. I don't know what it would cost to hire somebody with the needed skills, but personal costs are not inexpensive. I realize your minds are made up to leave Amy, but I hope you will reconsider. Minds can change if there's a valid reason to do so. To walk away from the benefits associated with Amy because one person complained about a pride display and you want to take control over the library seems like an expensive, unworthy decision, particularly as you're working on a budget. And while you're working on the budget, I hope you will consider using some county-owned land to create trails in the eastern part of the county for hikers, dog walkers, and people who enjoy being outdoors. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Juanita Brown, speaking of, is it our community future? Or, go ahead. Our common. Thank you for coming, Juanita.
Hi, thanks, Jeff, Danny, Donnie, Lynn, our other commissioners. I'm Juanita Brown. Some of you know me because we've worked together on projects. I'm 80 years old, and I'm the daughter of Millian Harold Cowan. They came to Yancey County more than half a century ago, and they dedicated much of their lives to the future of this special place that they loved. For decades, and Jeff, you were part of this as well, Yancey County has been known and recognized for having leaders who work across political affiliations, as well as differences of backgrounds, to solve community concerns in innovative ways. It's been one of the greatest strengths that we've ever had, and everyone else recognizes it. But now, in this current politicized climate, we could easily, together, destroy our own identity. Our greatest strength, the care and capacity that we have as a community to work together, which we showed once again in spades, in the amazing way our community responded after this storm, and we were part of the people who had huge damage and received that kind of love and care. We, all of us, have arrived at a key moment of choice. The future of our library and other issues do not have to end up as a win-lose. After our family's decades of community involvement, I've been heartbroken watching how this has unfolded. I'm not blaming anyone at all. This is a heartbreaking situation. I was in a book club on Sunday evening with the 92-year-old woman who sold our family our farm. She's not a political person. She invested money, time, care, as did many people in this community, across all boundaries, to help this library come into being 70 years ago, 50 years ago, 40 years ago, 30 years ago. As our leaders, we need you to help us now, to show what a small community can do when we choose to collaborate and compromise for community unity and the common good. Yancey County has another great strength. Many of our younger leaders, younger than me, who's 80 years old, I might add, are in key positions here. They come from longtime local families. They're highly educated, and they're skilled, and they've chosen to come home to Yancey County, when they could easily have gone anywhere and been highly recompensed for their skills. I might be reconsidering if I was part of this cohort, wondering what would happen to my organization if we had differences of opinion. And there's one sentence, and then we're wrapping up. As our leaders, I hope that you can see that Yancey Strong does not mean Yancey divided. Yancey Strong is only as good as Yancey Together, not only for the library, but for many other issues that we will inevitably need to work on together.
Thank you, Juanita.
Thank you.
Laura Gentl, speaking about community services. Thanks for coming, Laura. Got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Laura Gentl, and I'm a guest visiting Yancey County. One of my friends here that I'm visiting has family that's been here for several generations, so I don't count as a resident. So I don't count as a resident, but I'm kind of a temporary resident. I'm right on a writing retreat. And I've had enough time to see your county and to see a lot of the damage that's happening as well. As a guest, I've learned more about this beautiful area and the neighboring counties. Locals are quick to provide history and recommendations to learn more about the community, and everybody talks about the library and the services provided there, especially important post-natural disaster. In exploring the local and surrounding county, trails, and water launch points, I've seen the damages that still remain from Hurricane Helene, and I've heard stories of the personal damages and loss that has impacted the lives of your residents. I'm visiting from New Orleans, which has been my home for eight years. Down there, we know a thing or two about water and wind damage, and we know the hard work that it takes to support your local community through that, and in the long term, looking towards the future about what that recovery will be five, 10 years down the line. We also know that states and federal authorities make a lot of promises about how they're going to help you and how they're going to allocate funds. I have written other things about my experiences here, but listening to the people at this meeting, I implore you to reconsider breaking up any existing services that you have. That funding will not exist under this administration. Please take that seriously. New Orleans has suffered greatly, not just because of Katrina, but because of Ida and other storms we have had. And the funding that has been promised has never been delivered down there, and we have suffered for it. And it gets worse and worse with every storm and every disaster, which you cannot always plan for. I implore you to stay within the Amy system. Something that you had together for this many decades that's still working cannot be repaired once you tear it apart. Please don't do this to your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Peterson, and speaking on bookmobiles. Thanks for coming, Ryan.
Thank you.
Got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ryan Peterson. I am a current resident of Yancey County, with my family going back at least six generations, spanning Avery and Mitchell County. As a child, nothing excited me more than going to the library. The chance to explore and learn new things expanded my imagination and foster the love of learning. I come to you with concerns for our children, as many services that will support this spirit of learning and creativity will be limited, if not removed entirely. The ability to access information at your local library has been a staple in my life and many others for generations. I was lucky enough to always have transportation to the library, however, many do not have that privilege. The bookmobile brings these opportunities of learning and creativity to those children and also adults. As a rural county, many of our residents, for a myriad of reasons, will rely on the bookmobile to provide opportunities of enrichment that they can't always provide to themselves. These opportunities help shape our children and provide comfort for our adults of all ages. A book can open all kinds of doors for so many. I come to you today asking that you remember a time when that excitement of a new book brought sheer joy, just because, a new book brought sheer joy. Because without the bookmobile, we will be robbing future generations of that joy.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Carol Galatley. Did I get that right?
Yes.
And Carol, speaking about resources for kids.
Yes.
Thanks for coming, Carol.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you all for bearing with us, as we've been causing a little bit of chaos in this meeting. We are doing our best.
No problem.
But it's targeted still for an hour and a half when you're three years old. But we wanted to come and help you have the opportunity to hear directly from the people that your decisions are affecting. Okay, alright. So we came to talk about the libraries, you can guess, and we're planning on doing a little show and tell, but before we do that, I feel compelled to respond to the gentleman earlier who's talking about explicit materials being given to children. And I want to respond to that as a parent in Yancey County. So this is just not happening, and I think it's ridiculous to say that it is, and it's insulting to librarians who have spent their entire careers caring for the children of Yancey County. I think what may be happening is that maybe there are books that showcase, you know, lots of different types of families and lots of different types of people, and that may be what people are responding to. But to say that explicit materials are being given to children is just not true. I think if that was actually happening, everyone in this room would agree that we should remove those materials, but that's just not factual. What we did come here to say is, oh, but you know what, actually, before I move on from that, I want to say a little bit more about that. Again, as a parent of a three-year-old, as you can see, I believe really strongly in parental choice, and I think probably a lot of people here in this county do as well. And to me, that means that I, as a parent, get to choose what my child is exposed to and get to choose what materials they're reading, not the government. And so to me, it makes no sense the government would be coming in and trying to restrict what books are available for families to choose from, because ultimately, I'm the parent. I bring my daughter to the library, I supervise, we pick out the books that are appropriate for her, and then we bring those home. And every family has the right to do that, to go through the library, pick out what books are right for their family and their children, and bring those home and read them together. So to have the possibility that the government's going to take some books away is removing choice from parents in our county, and I just don't think that's what the people of this county are looking for. I'm sorry, Monita, can you come back here? Alright, we're just going to let her go, but please let her know if she starts causing chaos. But the other bit that we were going to do was a little bit of show and tell. We wanted to do show and tell. We wanted to share some of the things that we have loved from this library and say thank you to our librarians. So this is a squirrel that she made at Storytime at the library a few months back, and this, as you can see, is early that she was given at a different Storytime. We wanted to thank Ms. Natasha, the children's librarian, for running these wonderful Storytimes here at the Yancey Library and at all the other libraries. And we are very sorry that this is probably something that we will be losing if we are leaving the regional system, because Storytime and all the other children's programming has been such a wonderful thing for our family and for many other families. And we also just want to say that it was nice to have the opportunity to be introduced to Whitney here. I'm glad that she's eager to listen to families in this county. I look forward to taking the survey. But we love our current librarians, and the idea that we're going to be losing all the librarians that our kids have existing relationships with is really upsetting to me and I think to many other families in this county. So we just want to say thank you to the librarians who have worked so hard for their whole careers to take care of the kids in this county and help them learn. Thanks.
Agri Wigmore, speaking on budget. Thanks for coming, Agri.
I want to thank Ray Allen for speaking, because that's the first time I've come here in the last however many months it's been going on, a year, where I've heard a dissenting opinion. And unfortunately, I can't say that's a complimentary thing, because in all that time, we have not heard anything from our commissioners in conversation with that opinion, even though there's been clearly a majority of people with a strong opinion on the subject. I have a strong opinion, you've heard some of them. For me, this isn't just a problem with the library, it's a problem of transparency when our commissioners have refused to state why they are doing this, as if admitting it would be grounds for legal issues. It's a budgetary issue that we are prioritizing doing this during hurricane recovery, and it's a trust issue that you refuse to even meet with your constituents to discuss the issue. I've taken a glance at your budget, at least the first draft of it that's available, and I appreciate that, and the library is already $80,000 above the initial estimates. That's coming from every agenda item we heard about tonight that has a better claim: our fair housing, our forestry service, our parks and pools for the summer. I got a text this last week saying there was a gas leak at Burnsville Elementary and students were evacuated to Shoal Creek Church. The kids from Micaville, my old school, are going to Burnsville because they don't have a building. But we're putting money toward a vanity project to remove a library that ain't broke from a system that don't need fixing, for $80,000 in addition to what we had budgeted before, when the cost of everything down to tire recycling is skyrocketing. There's been more interest in this issue than any other I've seen. I genuinely appreciate the impetus you've given me to become a better and more invested citizen, yet none of you will so much as speak with us. I have to assume that you're hoping that come July, all this is just going to go away. I want you to know that one way or another, I will still be here. I hope it will be to comment on irises at the town center and the reopening parks and trails, but I'm expecting it's going to be about our debauching health of library systems and in defense of whatever you've decided to prioritize ruining next.
Our final speaker, Mr. Danny McIntosh. Speaking on tax.
I will be quick, because I know that y'all not enforcing all of the rules, because I think the rule is limited to 30 minutes of the company.
It is.
If I'm not mistaken.
That's that grace we talked about last minute.
Well, you have all that grace, it's nice, but I want to, real quick, as a passing in our community, I will say our friend Kenny Dean passed away Friday evening. Kenny truly was a friend everybody knew he was, and he and I have been through a lot together, not only his triggers, traps, and trout business, but we spent twenty-seven years together to burn for fire departments. We've been through some cold times and some hot times and some night times and day times. I think that's a nice and worthy of note, to give to create in our community. And just a note on the Board of Inquisition reviews. The board has adjourned for the purposes of appeals. And our best estimate is we're about halfway through, so we look, hopefully, racking up those time we filed appeals by maybe year due. And I will appreciate all of you for taking part in that, supporting that, and what you're doing for the taxpayers as well. So that would be all I would have, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it. Next, we have a gentleman, we're going to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 142-31811A6 for Personnel Matters. And before we do that, I want to make one announcement. We will be having our next budget meeting, for those that want to come, will be May the 19th at 9:00 a.m., and you're welcome to attend. And thank you so much for coming. We appreciate y'all being here and the comments, and look forward to coming. It'll be the second Monday next month, because we had to change some things this month, so it'll be the second Monday of next month. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session? I have a motion later second, second on Thursday. Thank you, folks, for coming. Appreciate you being here. Good to see you, Becky.